Counselor Durrell.
Thank you through you Chair Whaley. My husband is an awesome teacher at WCI, which means that any decisions I make may affect his place of work, so I have to declare a conflict of interest.
We got that, Madam Clerk?
Is that enough information Holga? Okay, good.
Approval of minutes. Counselor Durrell, you better do something here this afternoon. Thank you. Seconded by Mayor Jaworski. All those in favor? As we move to staff reports, we'll allow you to make your adieu and we'll see you at the in-camera meeting. So the main topic of discussion for this afternoon is the WLU-WCI feasibility study. Scott Nevin will be leading the charge, but I understand you have some consultants that you'll be introducing Scott as you go forward. Welcome.
Thank you Chair Whaley. I just have a few introductory comments. You may recall that about this time last year, council supported this initiative, the WLU-WCI feasibility study, providing some financial support for the study and some staff involvement. Today, what you are going to hear, I believe, is a very compelling argument to move forward to consider a community hub on the WLU-WCI lands in Northdale. And what I think you'll hear is that it presents a great opportunity for the Northdale neighborhood, for the city as a whole, and for the key stakeholders in that area. I'd like to take a minute to introduce the consultants. We have Joseph Milos, who will be presenting today, and Richard Martz from Live, Work, Learn, Play, the consultants that undertook the study. As well, Ulrika Gross from Wilfrid Laurier and Dennis Cuomo from the Waterloo Region District School Board are here. The other information I would tell you is that a little later on this evening at 7:00 this presentation will be provided to the school board as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of council. As Scott introduced, I am Joseph Milas, the project manager for this study. I'm going to keep this presentation short to approximately 10 minutes. It is an overview of the entire work that you have in front of you, which is about a 65-page document for your full review. In terms of our statement of mandate, it's always important to recollect where we started from. We were given through a competitive RFP that was run by the school board, Wilfrid Laurier University and the city, the mandate to undertake a feasibility study to identify the opportunities to pursue the redevelopment of the WCI-WLU Northdale lands. This accounts for approximately 17% of the entire Northdale neighborhood within the city of Waterloo, with the express focus to potentially establish a community hub, which was defined as a collection of facilities, programs, services, and uses that support the three-parties collective goals. Our key objectives for this study were to identify current and future innovative opportunities with regards to both institutional partners' learning objectives, identification of specifically community hub opportunities that could enhance the Northdale plan and other community needs in the area, identification and analysis of site opportunities and constraints, which you'll see in the full document in much more detail, identification and evaluation of building and site development options, which we pursue in overview in this presentation, identification of stormwater management issues, and overview and analysis of potential mitigation measures. This was a key component in which we brought the local engineering firm MTE Consultants onboard as our sub in order to examine how we might prevent future flooding events on these lands and in the neighborhood. And then finally, development of a business case for the recommended option, being able to understand that anything that is put down on paper needs to actually work as a feasible development opportunity for the years to come. As context, it's important to recognize this site within both Waterloo as well as within the Northdale neighborhood. It is composed of approximately 22 acres of land. Ownership is divided between Wilfrid Laurier University and the Waterloo Region District School Board, accounting for about 17 acres to the school board and five acres to Wilfrid Laurier University. The site is bisected by Hazel Street, which is an important consideration in pursuing any redevelopment options, and it does not contain full frontage along Hickory Street, which is an important consideration on how we began to look into the site's organization. It's also to recognize that Northdale as a whole is a bowl. Water collects unfortunately on this site in vast quantities, which is how you create the stormwater issues that we were asked to examine. The portion of the study that you'll see we pay the most attention to is the stakeholder engagement. Whenever you undertake feasibility, you need to be able to bring all of your parties aligned into the same direction. So for the vast majority of our mandate, we were actually out in the community, speaking not only to members of the school board, the city, and the university, but other entities in Waterloo who might be able to form partnership opportunities with this project. No single one entity can foot the entire bill, so we really did look into understanding how we might undertake collaborative efforts with other parties to really create an option that is both developably feasible as well as then pertinent to the needs of the community. As overview, we have a strategic advisory team made up of the parties that Scott listed, which we met with at least three to four times per month. From the Wilfrid Laurier University, we met with a variety of stakeholders ranging from their president and chief financials officers down to their local individual department heads, really to understand how programming and other opportunities might be brought forward from the university to program and use space in any community hub opportunity. From the city, we met with a collection of city leadership as well as local councillors, as well as then economic development and other entities, really to understand where we might be able to pull city programming, city needs into this project to see them fulfilled. From the school board, we've met routinely with WCI. Their vision committee is an internal committee they struck even before this project started to understand how they might pursue the redevelopment or the reimagining of their school. We've met with the Waterloo Region District School Board Superintendent's Group now twice to get their feedback and buy-in along the way to understand if we are actually meeting the school board's needs. In terms of external stakeholders, a theme that emerged throughout this undertaking was that of arts and culture. It was something that was identified as both a gap in the market that could be exploited as a development opportunity, as well as something that stakeholders really wished to see brought into this project. So we've reached out to and begun conversations with the Coalition of Performing Arts Waterloo. They are a local group of community leaders in the arts who are currently looking to create a space for culture and arts in an integrated fashion, and they also have currently money available as well as the ability to leverage their relationships to get more grants and funding to create space for such a project. And then finally, we reached out to and began conversation again with the University of Waterloo, specifically Chris Reed, who sits on the city's county gown committee, to understand as they are a major player both in Northdale as well as directly adjacent to the site, if there are any opportunities for their partnership, both potentially in the future or at present. From this, several key themes emerged as to what might be possible for this site as well as what is missing in Northdale according to these stakeholders. Currently lacking, you will see, is a lack of green space, social amenities, quality retail, and gathering spaces. We heard quite clearly from members of all three major groups, specifically those dealing with students, that gathering space and quality retail are things that the student body that lives in Northdale is currently missing. They exist in sort of vertical towers but don't have a fourth place, a place outside of the home, school, or work, to really congregate and call as their own, which is where a community hub plays into that need quite significantly. Desired, theater venues, recreation space, office and/or lab space that could be used in a collaborative fashion, and educational programs outside of what is offered necessarily by an institution catering towards post-secondary students or a school for high school students, but something that is community-facing, were all key themes identified. And what's important is that all of those four uses initially were seen as sort of silos of activity in which one group might only use them 20% of the time, five days a week as their space, but through conversation, we've really begun to broach collaboration between all parties as to how those places might be integrated and used over an 18-hour cycle, which is how you create feasibility for these sorts of projects. And then specific possibilities for redevelopment. The first was a new WCI. The school as it is right now is saddled with both a burden of deferred maintenance as well as the need to become AODA compliant by the provincially set date. The target amount of dollars that requires is approximately $25 million to bring the school just up to a standard where it can continue to function. So the school board really does need to pursue and has brought to the table the idea of potentially redeveloping the school wholesale. That's not to mean that you lose all the heritage of the site, because this is a heritage, this is a site that has heritage within Waterloo, but in order for the school board to maintain itself in this neighborhood, as well as then to maintain the highest quality of excellence it gives in the school, there does need to be some redevelopment thought brought to how the building operates. Social innovation. Waterloo is our tech capital of Canada, so it was important for us to fully plumb the depths of how social innovation and other forms of innovation efforts might be brought to this project. Disaster recovery. That was a key mandate as part of our RFP response to understand how the site might operate as a disaster recovery site. We can say for two of the three parties, there is quite a large potential for it to operate as such, which is an off-site place in case there is a disaster in Waterloo for the brains of the parties to still keep going, their tax and payroll as well as their fiber optic. Unfortunately for Wilfrid Laurier University, because they are directly across the street, if there is any sort of disaster, it is most likely going to still hit Northdale, so there is not the potential for them, but there still is for two of the three. And then finally, community engagement. And this is a catch-all term we've used to describe really the type of programming you would see from cradle to grave, so things that appeal both to very young as well as to more senior residents of Waterloo. And that is keeping in theme with this site's vocation already. On-site, there is the Movement Research and Disability Center, as run by Wilfrid Laurier University, that catches a large portion of older residents of Waterloo. And then at WCI, you have ages 15-plus who come there every day. So really, it's important that any sort of redevelopment keeps in line with those visions and those user groups already that frequent the site, as well as that vision that's held in the Northdale plan. In terms of space program specifications, this is the very detailed breakdown of the amount of space that each stakeholder thinks as of today they could actually use on-site. Starting with the Waterloo Region District School Board, that is a very specific number because it comes from a very specific place, which is the Ministry of Education. The Waterloo Region District School Board, if it were to pursue redevelopment of 1,400 student space, would need approximately 182,000 square feet of building. In terms of the city, what we heard from members of the senior leadership team we met with is approximately 3,500 square feet of community-oriented space, something similar to a community meeting room, as well as then some potential outdoor field and public park that could be used in conjunction with the school board in off-peak hours, and then potentially some civic office needs for their parks and community engagement offices. From COPA, the number that they have put together through their architectural review process right now is 26,280 square feet. It's important to understand that that number has a lot of caveats to it. Approximately half of it is office and artist studio space, so space that could be profit-generating for artists who might wish to rent them, similar to an art scape model that people might be familiar with in Toronto. There's also then the requirement of about 10,850 square feet for an integrated theater and performance venue space, something that we identified in the market is missing of that scale in Waterloo. We heard quite clearly, and if you look through the detailed document, you'll see the research, that a number of the performance venue spaces that exist in the city right now are institutional spaces that aren't accessible throughout the year or are ad-hoc community spaces that aren't necessarily publicly facing. So what we understood was there is actually leakage from the Waterloo market to the surrounding area, from people looking for those cultural moments, whereas COPA believes that by bringing them together into one integrated space, there really is quite an economy that can be tapped into. From Wilfrid Laurier University, three departments identified the need for new space at the school, or space that they could program at least. From the science faculty, specifically the Department of Kinesiology, there was the identification of approximately 26,000 square feet of what we've identified as a center for physically active communities. It's a new initiative that the kinesiology department is looking to undertake, which is publicly oriented, community-facing, sports, education, and development programming. From the faculty of music, 10,000 square feet to create the Laurier Conservatory. Wilfrid Laurier currently is operating the Beckett School of Music in a temporary space, and they've already had to renovate twice now, just based on the demand of students wishing to learn music education. So they think that if they are actually able to build a custom space at approximately 10,000 square feet, they can create something that actually has a home for that program for the long-term and really then can create that demand and sustain it. And finally, from the educational faculty, approximately 6,000 to 8,000 square feet for what they've called a reading clinic. So something that would allow them, again, keeping with Laurier's mandate of being community-facing, a space where they can invite the community in to actually, for continuing education and other forms of programming. From this, we've developed a vision for this site and specifically this opportunity. And touching on some of the key themes, we see the site as being a home for both the arts and culture, health and wellness, and focused innovative education, keeping with those themes that come from the Northdale plan, as well as the parties that have come to the table to date. We see this centered on indoor and outdoor programming, since any sort of hub needs to be able to appeal both within its walls as well as activate the 22 acres of space and land that surround it, as well as create targeted commercial and unique placemaking experiences. If you're going to create the fourth place, that place outside of the home, outside of the school or outside of work, you really do need those commercial experiences that are one of a kind to make people want to spend time and energy there, and it sustains those visits so that you create more synergy and spin-off for other uses. We do believe that over time, this can become a completely integrated community experience, and as Northdale becomes a dynamic place to live, potentially having this hub begin to change some of the market conditions of the Northdale neighborhood as it is right now, it will truly evolve into a mixed-use neighborhood and destination within Waterloo, in line with the Northdale plan's vision for the entire area. To this end, diving down now into the specifics of the development opportunity, we see this hub centered on four key themes, of which in the detailed document, you will see very clear precedent studies that we've undertaken to understand how each of these sorts of community hubs operate and how they're funded in other jurisdictions, these being arts and culture, health and wellness, focused education, but starting with a renewed WCI. In order to understand the key physical challenges, opportunities, and considerations of the site, we have put together this overview, focusing on a few of the specifics. First is WCI, which I've mentioned, requires at least at minimum $25 million just to keep the building going in its current form and bring it into compliance with provincial standards. Parking will be a key driver of this project in this site. If you're going to replace the parking that exists and then bring in higher-density uses, you thus need to bring in higher-density parking options. Traffic. What became very apparent to us in speaking with WCI is that Hazel Street presents a challenge to their operations right now. Their parking, as well as passenger pickup and drop-up for school buses, occurs across the street, while Hazel Street is currently the main north-south connection through Northdale, so there are pedestrian conflicts that occur every day that need to be resolved, especially if you bring higher-density uses to site. Stormwater. The back end of the site that currently borders onto the residential that is appearing in the Northdale neighborhood is where the largest flooding events happen, and those need to be resolved if you're actually going to bring school uses and higher-density uses onto the site and into more integrated green fashion. Site permeability. The site currently exists as an island, if you think of it... ...will help actually stitch the site into the neighborhood better. We were amazed to understand that there are a number of concerns WCI has with potential conflicts in danger or off-hour usage of their back areas, just because people wander onto the site and then spend a lot of time trying to find their way out of it in the dark, and that creates problems in terms of littering, noise, and actual safety concerns for people in the building. And then finally, WLU. The uses that are on-site are very important to WLU, and they do need to be retained, but they also need to be sequenced in the right fashion so that development can happen. So this project needs to understand how that phasing might work, and we've put some thought into that, but this is very much the first step. And as I talk through the next steps, you'll understand that there needs to be another series of work in examining exactly how you plan for a project of this scale and this nature. In terms of... ...testing, there's... ...to under exactly how much land area would be used up, and if there are other development opportunities that can be unlocked from it. To start, we modeled 165,000 square feet for the school, which is slightly less than the provincial standard in one building, but because we're examining the potential ............................................. We've then created a 40,000-square-foot bundle for all of the integrated performance venue that, again, would use part of the WCI auditorium that exists at currently, but then also bring in the necessities that COPA has put to really create that performance venue and that center of community there. So the total development that is currently modeled is about 238,000 square feet of program, on top of which, in order to meet the parking demands, we've modeled a 500-car parking garage to be able to handle that new capacity, and then the retention and refurbishment of the current athletic fields that the school currently has. To put that into dollars and cents, for a new school, keeping in line with the school's $204 per square foot development costs, that would cost approximately $33,660,000. That is in line with the budget the Waterloo Region District School Board has for a new redevelopment of a school on-site. To build a center for physically active communities, at $202 per square foot, which is, when you look into the precedents we've pulled, the average of the ways in which these projects of similar scale and size have been built in other jurisdictions, is about $6 million plus for that center. And then at $508 per square foot, it is the most expensive, but it is the most technically required building for the arts and culture, a $20 million building. So the price tag right now for this potential community hub is $60,646,000. On top of which, a parking garage of 500 stalls would be in the order of magnitude of $14 million. Athletic fields, the refurbishment and relocation would be approximately $1.5 million. And stormwater management, which you will see in greater detail, would be at above $2 million. Now these, just to preface, are the high-level numbers. This would be the total cost, but that is not to say that it's allocated to any one party at this time. It would be through the next steps of work that we would actually begin to understand who would be coming to the table with money to be able to bring this project to fruition. In order to understand exactly how this might work, we tested option one, which is the most easily phaseable way in which to redevelop the project, which is WCI moves across Hazel Street and arts and culture uses develop where the WCI building stands to date. And this is the schematic we gave to MTE for their review, and this is what they have developed. As you can see, WCI currently, if it were to be redeveloped into an urban format, which is in line with the school board's understanding of a new project, would fit easily within the envelope across Hazel Street. Any parking that would be required for the site would fit within that boundary as well. And then the 17 acres of land that currently WCI and the school board occupy would be freed up for new development projects. And there's a key distinction to draw here and to why these boxes are not all into one giant box, which is the feasibility. We've isolated each element so that funding for each element can be pursued individually, so that no one project holds up the rest of the opportunity. And this is something that we learned working with the city of Guelph on their Baker Street project. When you mix a number of uses into one building in true mixed use, the funding streams of it actually become more complicated because you have individual users funding maybe two or three floors of a project, but the whole package of it needs to be brought online at once and phased at once in order to bring the entire project forward. By breaking this out into sections and pieces that can be either drawn together through breezeways or other options, which is some of the ways in which these projects have been handled in other jurisdictions, you actually create easier funding streams and easier ways to advocate for the necessary grants and awards that might be necessary to meet the gaps between individual user groups' ability to bring in money. That is not to say, however, that option one is the only option available. We gave MT three other options to review, all of which you can see in schematic portion here. Each one of them does not max out the 22 acres. Even keeping those footprints as tight as possible and as urban as possible to keep in line with the Northdale plan's vision, there is a lot of land here that can be used for other development opportunities that might arise. So there are a number of potential other options that reveal themselves, and that is where the next steps of this work need to take us, which is the master planning of this 22 acres in a holistic fashion. In terms of those next steps, we put together a potential timeline related to what needs to come next, and this takes us from where we are today down to potentially a shovel in the ground. The first in the short term is the work that needs to happen to bring those parties to the LOI stage. We've begun the conversations of how arrangements between groups might work and who is actually at the table. What needs to happen now is a deeper dive with them to understand the exact terms of the deal, as well as then to get them committed to actually being parties both with the three groups that are here today, but also with other groups that might come out of the, as we begin to push this forward. And that's how you actually begin to create something that can become its own momentum and bring more money to the table by being able to show that there's people who are willing to take space today. As we've learned and as our deeper document reveals, the private sector usually comes to the table the last when it comes to funding, but when you create a package of user groups that are already ready to take space tomorrow and have their own funding streams allocated, it is incredibly likely that the private sector will see that opportunity and want to invest themselves. So that first stage of work is really to set the groundwork for future development. The second step of the short term is also to develop RFP for master planning services, to be able to bring the best qualified master planner, architect onboard, to not only imagine how this 22-acre parcel of land can operate as it's a district of Northdale, but properly integrate into the entire Northdale neighborhood, as well as then address the physical concerns of how do you make a heritage building feel like a heritage building even if it's new, and how do you make sure that all of the needs of the various user groups are met in the best fashion. We have put a TBD on the necessary time it takes to actually bring a firm of that scale on, simply because it is a public process and procurement will most likely be required. So we don't have a crystal ball right now to understand exactly the length of time between the short and the medium-term steps. But once that happens, we see that master plan being able to be developed in the next four to six months. It should be a very tight process that can be run, especially if all the user groups are at the table with LOIs able to explicitly dictate what it is they need. And then finally, from that longer-term stage, following from the master plan, a 12- to 18-month process to keep in line with the public planning process that needs to be undertaken, community engagement, as well as then the necessary approvals and entitlements that need to happen with the city to make this a feasible project. And with that, as my voice gives out, we have allocated a potential fee for that short term in terms of approximately $150,000 to $200,000 for a four-to-six-month scope, essentially a continuation of the scope of work in the bundle that was done for this first phase. And with that, I think I've broken your computer, but I open the floor to any questions if there are any.
Thank you very much for your presentation, council. Do we have any questions for the delegation at this stage? Counselor Reeth has a comment.
Thank you for the presentation. This is awesome, and it's great that partners are all working together. And I know in my, in that, because I live up that way too, there's a lot of demand for youth space, like kids, elementary school kids, right, after-school kind of programs. There's a high need for that. And my other con, and I think it's really innovative, and the arts and to with performance space, that's always, for a long time, been an issue too. There's not really just the right size of performance venue that's accessible in the And the other, back on to the heritage bit, I just hope that the partners will consider adaptive reuse of some of that school in this planning. So thank you for coming.
Mayor Jaworski.
Thank you very much. It is very exciting. On the map there, you showed the, essentially, the new WCI in the main option would be on the west side of the lands. And I see there's an intermix of property use there, right? So how does that work? Have the parties already agreed, or at this point are agreed in principle that this might happen? Or is this just a suggestion at this point, that, you know, some things from Laurier might be on what's currently school board land and not?
I will answer on behalf of the parties. There's no formal agreement, but there is an agreement in spirit that the necessary legal transfers or arrangements that would be necessary to bring this project forward, they are very much achievable, in keeping with that vision. This is also, to put an asterisk on this, this is the option that we see as, in terms of phasing, the most beneficial for the site, simply because the school board can't find new land in Northdale, and it needs to maintain its presence in the community. So the way they'll during construction that building operate their new facility, and that new facility then, the old facility leaves, and you open it up for development. But that is to say, this is only one option. But all three parties are very much in belief that they can achieve a consensus on how to get there.
Excellent. Second part was on the AODA compliance timeframe. Is there a specific year or date associated with that, or is it sort of a soft time to comply?
I cannot speak to this. There is a specific date, though I cannot remember it off the top of my head, but 2025 is what the gallery is telling me.
Thank you.
Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Chair Whaley, and thanks for coming in for this initial piece of work. I think it's, we've known the opportunity in this area is significant, that the need for us to get this right is absolutely critical to achieving the future vision, not just of the Northdale Plan, but of the we each have to our own clients. And the obligation for us to do this in partnership, in collaboration together, is the only way I know that we'll all walk there and get there, in a way that we can, I think, collectively hope to pay for, and make that end of it work as well. More for Mr. Nevin, because we've got a recommendation in front of us we're going to have to deal with. I don't know if you had anything you were going to do subsequent to this line of questioning, but wondering if you could walk counsel through what you're asking for today and what you see as the immediate next step that we'd undertake as a city?
Through your chair, Whaley, to Counselor Henry's question, from a staff perspective, I think the next step, the next steps are to sit back down with the university and the school board, after their boards have considered the same information that you're seeing today. And if there are positive outcomes of those board meetings, then the next step would be to attempt to better define the party's roles, perhaps going forward, and their roles and interests going forward as well. This process to date has really been largely about the city and the university and the school board talking about the possibilities, not really out there in the community with a lot of other organizations, although Joseph did note a couple of groups that we've heard from. I think now that this is a very much public initiative, there might be an opportunity to hear from some other people about interest, and then the three main parties can digest that information. Ultimately, we'd want to report back to counsel with some information in the order of the next few months, in my perspective.
And I certainly appreciate that, Mr. Nevin, I guess by way of comment, as we're asked to give some assent to next steps in this process. Like, the shared vision around, you know, new educational facilities, subject to that being where the board's trustees wish to take the board staff, makes a lot of sense. The collaborative energy that we've suggested around community facilities is something I know we've all heard is necessary across the city, and in a place that's highly transit-accessible can be very beneficial, not just to the immediate area, but to broader community users. The linkage between academic programming, significant advanced high school-level academic programming with the institutions and potential private sector, and pseudo-public sector providers of that in a hub, I think is particularly exciting on the health and wellness side. But I'd anticipate that we've got a lot more digging and sharpening of pencils to do around defining and understanding what an arts and culture mandate could reasonably look like with all the parties' interests here. I know as well as we work through station area planning, one of the things we've been talking about is shared parking facilities amongst parties to be able to make different pieces feasible and a more efficient land use kind of matter. To the extent that there's new development which carries with it parking requirements, the sharing is a useful aspect of the vision. I just am cautious at making sure that the role of the automobile in Northdale's vision is not overstated as we try to project forward, nor that we get into a place where we overly subsidize that kind of use. I think particularly from the public sector point of view, I have very little interest with increased substantial subsidy on the auto side coming from us. So that's an area that I think needs some thought as the phasing work proceeds as well. But appreciate all the work. I think it's an incredibly exciting vision, and we'll see who wants to attach itself to this, because I think this is going to be an incredible hub for not just Northdale, but for the community that can be a showpiece in the decades to come.
Well, thank you for your comments, counselor. What I hope to do is to hear the end of the presentation. Are we done from your side?
Yes, Mayor.
So you are done. Thank you for your presentation. The recommendation asks us to receive the information and to give back comments to staff. Counselor Henry, you began the process. Thank you for that, and I'm sure lots of notes were taken. Is there any other member of council who wants to comment on the report itself and next steps? No one? Everybody's good? Well, I have a few comments, but I wondered if, is that? We haven't, so, okay. Live, work, learn, play, thank you for your work. You had no constraints on cost, you just went out and put forward your best vision, and we appreciate that, and we've learned a lot from it, especially with helping us to understand the flooding issues, which is something that we're going to have to deal with regardless of how we move the project forward. Some of the numbers that you've had attached, and there were many, were interesting for counsel to receive in light of the stark reality of the numbers that we live with every day, that weren't a part of this presentation that I want to address now, and that is $50 million. And that's the debt that we owe for Rim Park remaining, and that doesn't come due until 2031. X million, the last week's meeting, we planned to go ahead with a new home for seniors at X million dollars, and that's something that we committed to at the last meeting. X million for a proposed new East Side library. And now you're talking about a 500-stall parking garage, amongst other expensive items. And from my own perspective, as a counselor, I think the message that we should send our partners in this case is call us in 2031. If there's no other, if there's no other, Counselor? Counselor Freeman?
Okay, that last line kind of caught my attention, because really, I don't see this as a huge city funding piece. I mean, there's partners who are the funders within this, and in my mind, the role that we have to play, and that we did play, was around bringing parties together, looking at a combined vision. And maybe there are elements within this plan that some of those partners may be able to implement in and of itself, you know, whether it becomes the entire piece, or whether it becomes a portion, or whatever, because, but I never took the information from this report as being an action plan for the city. And so, you know, and I think there are some interesting elements that came out in terms of conversation around transportation and use of the streets in that space, which may or may not require this whole vision to be realized, to proceed with some elements of that. And, you know, I appreciate the work that went into this in terms of bringing folks together and kind of doing some high-level thinking around how that space could become not just independent users, but an entire community-run space.
I was similarly excited by, you know, the full slide deck. We're on page 51, it talks about performance venues. For example, the Isabel Bader Center for Performing Arts in Kingston, where although it's an enormous project, the city's portion of it was less than 10%, with money coming from philanthropists, federal government, provincial government, as well as local universities. So that, you know, I think there's, it's good to dream big, and we'll see where we get to, but your point is well taken, certainly on debt that we owe.
Any further comments? Seeing none, Counselor Burke. I've got some comments on this.
No, I'm excited. I think it's important to have a seat at the table with so many different parts here, that I think that's what citizens want, groups that will work together to hopefully find a vision for an area that, and I started driving in there 20 years ago, and it's certainly changed dramatically in those last 20 years. And to move forward, whether it's a 10- or 20-year timetable, is not nearly as important as I think. The fact that all of these bodies are coming together and trying to make a real hub, that will be something we will look at 30 years, well, somebody else, other than me, probably, 30 years from now, and appreciate. So I want to, I think there's value in making the investment that we have to find that out, and I'd like to look, I like to look more at it as we go down the road. So I look forward to the new ideas that we have.
Madam Clerk, we're now to go into the community of the in-camera meeting. Could you help us to get there?
Yes, the motion hasn't been passed yet.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, we have a recommendation before us, that counsel receive the report and that staff be directed to report back. Moved by Counselor Henry, seconded by Counselor Freeman. All those in favor? All those opposed? We'll now move into, over to the mayor to get us into the closed session. Is that right, Clerk?
Yeah. Welcome to the City of Waterloo Special Council Meeting on Wednesday, September 12, 2016. As for disclosure, pecuniary interest, and general nature thereof, seeing, oh, we should have Counselor Durrell back, no? Seeing none, motion going closed session.
Counselor Burke, Counselor Freeman, all those in favor? That would be all of us. Thank you.